...meeting of August the 15th. It's good to see so many people here in the audience today, so thank you for being here. This meeting is officially called to order at 8:32 a.m. And as usual, we will start with our chaplain prayer and pledges. And we welcome Gary and Marcella to lead us in the prayer and pledges.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right. Giving honor to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, to the members of the San Angelo City Council, and all that are here today, will you join with us as we pray. Precious Father in heaven, in Jesus's name, we bow before you, the Author and Finisher of our faith, seeking your wisdom and your counsel. We ask you to guide the city council and that they will be endowed with wisdom and knowledge, revelation, and understanding to execute the business of the city in a way that will glorify you and be of benefit to all of us. We pray, God, that you help them to do that which is pleasing in your sight. We thank you, dear Lord, for slightly cooler temperatures today, and we ask you to also remember our ranchers and farmers, that you'll bring some rain for them. And Father, we pray also for the people of Lahaina, Hawaii, who have suffered so much devastation there, and we pray that you will send relief and comfort to them. We ask these things in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and our Savior. Let everybody say amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Today, we have one proclamation, which will be the proclamation of the 60th anniversary of the March on Washington, so if you'll please come forward, and we will do that proclamation. Nearly 60 years ago, on August 28, 1963, more than 250,000 people walked down Constitution and Independence avenues together at the Lincoln Memorial, where they heard speakers, songs, and prayers to push America to change. The event was the March on Washington for Jobs and Freedom, in which a litany of civil rights and labor leaders demanded voting rights, fair wages, economic justice, educational equity, and advancements in a true end to segregation. In the months after the march, ongoing demonstrations and violence continued to pressure political leaders to act. The passage of the Civil Rights Act of 1964 and the Voting Rights Act of 1965 were turning points in the struggle for civil rights. Together, the two bills outlawed segregated public facilities and prohibited discriminatory practices in employment and voting. The success of the march reverberated throughout society and provided a model for social change. The power of mass, nonviolent demonstrations inspired Americans fighting for equal rights and access to opportunities regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, religion, age, sexual orientation, or disabilities. It is not enough to reflect with pride on the victories of the movement. In honor of every man, woman, and child who left footprints on the march, we must make progress in our time. Therefore, I, Brenda Gunter, Mayor of the City of San Angelo, Texas, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim August 28, 2023, as the 60th anniversary of the March on Washington in San Angelo, Texas, and urge all citizens to reflect and recommit to those goals from the March on Washington.
On behalf of the Martin Luther King Jr. Association, we're especially appreciative of the fact that the City of San Angelo is cosponsoring the event on Saturday morning at 10:30 at the City Hall steps, where we will, on the 26th, that Saturday, where we will celebrate the progress that's been made. We are doing this at a time when, in a peculiar kind of way, there are people who are telling us that we must not remember, or teach, or learn about our history if it's in any way uncomplimentary, because it makes people feel bad and feel guilt and shame. But nothing could be further from the truth, because the fact of the matter is, if we don't know our history, we don't know where we came from. If we don't know where we came from, we don't know who we are, or how we deal with a roadmap that will show us how to move into the future. So I'm a geezer. I actually grew up during the 50s and graduated from high school and became a young adult in the 50s and 60s, and lived through segregation at its worst in the early community I was at, and worked with and saw the progress that brought you where you are now. And I will say, as a witness to that, that there is absolutely no resemblance between life in San Angelo, or our country now, and what it was 60 years ago. For people who aren't geezers, it's kind of hard to understand how completely that dominated the lives of other people. And this would be, have been an illegal gathering, where the very fact that white people and black people and brown people would shake hands, even hug each other, is seen as racial misogyny, and you would be met with violence when you left this place, just because of who you are here. And so we want everybody to come out on that event. There's going to be some beautiful music, there's going to be speeches delivered from the time and the speakers of the March on Washington, there's going to be recommitment to the future, and we hope that you all come out. It will be a big event for the city, and I believe that it will, if you come, leave you with a sense of unity that sometimes we take for granted. And so I hope all of you come out there, that's 10:30 at City Hall steps, and that will be on the 26th, Saturday morning of August. I'll see you there. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Come on, Renata, you're a talker.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brenda. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the deus, begin by stating their name and address, or single member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to come forward and speak? Please do so.
I'm as nervous as a peach, a cat passing a peach seed, so you can bear with me. Hello, my name is Dorothy Littlefield, and my address is...
A little bit more into that microphone, please.
Yes, ma'am. Say hello, my name is Dorothy Littlefield, and my address is 5169 State Highway 208. First of all, I want y'all to know that never in my life that I thought that you people would have anything to do to affect my life, but y'all's decisions do affect everything that goes on in my life. That being said, goodness, I'm nervous. That being said, I come before you in hopes that you will help me. Back in 1983, my mother and a few of her neighbors got together and paid the City of San Angelo to have the water line extended one block outside of city limits. Everything was fine for many years until a new neighbor took over the water. He did not know what his responsibilities were, and he cut and concreted my water line in. I called the City of San Angelo, I called the City of San Angelo Water Department, and Allison Strube told me that the city had no record of that water line, and that San Angelo did not provide water to the county residents, and that that line was installed illegally. I did not want to raise a lot of fuss about it, because one of the peoples that paid was Judge Fred Buck, and he was a good, fair man, and I didn't want to tarnish his name. Well, I searched for two years, and I finally found record of it, and I found it in the San Angelo archives at standard time. And I also remembered the contractor that installed the line going down Highway 208, and he still does work for the City of San Angelo. And he told me that the water line was approved back then, and he told me that how much it had cost. I talked to Mr. Andy Valicio, and he asked for the records that I had, so I sent him some, and sent him what I had, and he told me that he could not help me. I contacted the city attorney, and she said that she couldn't help me. I had found, actually found the actual receipt where it was paid, and then I called Mr. Shankelton, and I told him that I'd found it, where it was paid. And his response was, "We do not provide county residents with city water, but try to go to the rural control water company." I asked him about the RV park that's right next door to my house, and past my house, and he said, "The reason why they have water there from the city is because it's been documented." Now, that's not my fault that the paperwork was not documented where it's supposed to be. I provided everything that I could, that I could find, and what really upset me is because the City of San Angelo had access to these records more than I did, but I still found them. So it was, yeah. My mother worked hard her whole life, and she had passed away in that house, and...
If you could, your three minutes is up, but I'd like you to finish, but if you could wrap it up as quick as possible.
Yes, ma'am. I would just like to try to get some help to get my water turned back on, because I cannot stay at my house, and it was paid for, and I do have proof of it, and I really, really need the help. I have stage-three breast cancer, and I want to go home.
Thank you, Dorothy.
Mayor, I do want to add, you did submit information to me about this. I know that we had Shane that was out on vacation, he came back, he's trying to schedule a meeting so we can all sit down and talk. There's a lot more to the story, and I'd like to be able to sit down with you and hopefully get some resolution, but Shane is sitting back there, or he's standing back there, and he'll get with you, and let's get a date scheduled, we can sit down and talk, okay? Thank you.
Mayor Gunter, I would vote for you again if you run.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
Oh, that's cheating.
Count to three. If you don't come forward by three, public comment will be stopped. One, two, three, the end of public comment has now happened. So we'll move into the consent agenda. We will start by pulling Item C into our regular agenda, so remove Item C for consideration under the consent agenda. I will ask if there's any other items that council would like to pull and have discussed. So Larry?
No ma'am.
Okay, Karen?
No ma'am.
Lucy?
No ma'am.
Harry?
No ma'am.
Tom?
Nothing to pull.
Tommy?
No ma'am.
No further items will be pulled from the consent agenda, which means I need a motion for approval. May I have one?
Motion to approve.
Karen made a motion, Harry seconded that motion. Any public comment concerning any of the items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing all ayes, no nays, consent agenda approved with the exception of Item C. We will now move into the regular agenda portion of our agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above, and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. So I am actually going to start the regular agenda with the Item C that was pulled from the consent agenda. And that item is, consider awarding Task Order Number Eight under IDIQ Contract ES-06-19, Engineering Services for Modifications to the Bill Ailer Senior River Stage to Entropac Hibbs and Todd in the amount of $186,984.39 for civil, mechanical, plumbing, and electrical engineering design documents utilizing civic events, fund balance, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Al, you're on.
Mayor, before Al goes, I do want to make one correction. There's a clerical error in the caption, and I believe on the document itself, it should be Task Order Seven. It's not substantive, but I do want to point out that it should be Task Order Seven and not Eight.
So forget I said Eight, remember that I said Seven, and that will be documented. You're on.
Reese, I was going to mention that to you, so.
Okay.
Good morning, Mayor, good morning, Council, Mr. Vanzuela, Alfonso Torres, Construction Manager, City of San Angelo. I think everybody, you should all be familiar with the project from my last presentation. Basically, we're moving forward, and we are moving forward with Phase One of the project. And this contract is for engineering services. We had to put it on the regular agenda, because there's a budget amendment attached to it. So if you have questions about the project, I'm here to answer them. If you have questions about the finance, then I'll have Sid come up.
The river stage is one of the great assets that we have, just as the river is a great asset, and the combination of the two means that we must continue to reinvest back into our assets, and the river stage is one of them. So I support moving forward, and look forward to the opportunity to see some improvements there. Further comments from anyone on council concerning this item? Larry?
My major concern is the ramp on the east side of it. As you probably are aware, it is really steep right now, and my concern is that folks go along with approved ADA requirements for that. We've had a ramp in the past that was at a 1 to 12 ratio, which is extreme. It's the very maximum for ADA. I would suggest you use the ratio of 1 to 16, or 1 to 20 on that, with, you know, periodic level spots as directed by ADA.
Correct. And I can take another look at that. Right now, the plan is, of course, we're looking at creating accessible routes to all of the river stage. Right now, there's three levels. There's the top of the hill that we're not addressing right now, because it's the top of the hill. There's the middle level where the box office is and the restrooms are, and then there's the stage and the slab down below. So right now, there's no accessible way for someone in a wheelchair or other handicap to get from the stage level up to the box office level. They have to struggle down the hill, go down the steps. There is, as you said, an accessible route existing, that's, I think, 1 and 12, which is what ADA requires, with a level landing every 30 feet, as ADA requires, but it's outside the fence. So part of this phase is to move that fence to the other side, so that that accessible route is inside the facility, and people can get from the box office level down to the stage level. In addition, we're creating ramps to get people from the slab up to the river stage itself, in the front and the back, for performers and people that are attending. 1 and 12, the existing ramp meets the requirements of the ADA? I understand what you're saying, that the shallower it is, the better...
Virtually everyone. The Texas code even says that the preferred is 1 to 16, or 1 to 20.
I can take a look at that right now, the budget is for that, but I can certainly visit with Sid and see what we can do about that. But yes, this Phase One is addressing as many ADA concerns as we can. We're adding handrails at the steps themselves, we're creating another accessible level at the top, at the box office level, so people can sit up there as well.
I think that's wonderful, what you've done on that.
So we're addressing as many of those we can, but I will take another look at what you're talking about.
Any further comments for Al? Then may I have a motion for approval?
Move.
So moved by Harry?
Second.
Second by Lucy. Public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Seeing none opposed, the motion is approved, 7-0. We will now go into Item A on the regular agenda, which is Consider a Request for an Appeal of the Planning Commission's Approval of Conditional Use 23-19 for a Short-Term Rental Located at 635 South Jefferson Street. John, you're on.
Thank you. Before I get into the presentation, we did receive a letter, or an email yesterday, from the applicant indicating that she would like to withdraw her request for a short-term rental conditional use. Unfortunately, we can't just withdraw it, because it's already been approved by the Planning Commission, so it comes to you as an appeal from the neighbors, so you will have to take action. She is requesting that you take an action to deny the short-term rental. So with that being the case, I won't, unless you want to see more, I won't go through the whole presentation of what was originally requested.
So when the motion is made, the motion needs to say what?
Basically, to deny the short-term rental conditional use.
So whoever's going to make that motion should make a motion to deny the approval of that short-term rental at 635 South Jefferson. Is that correctly stated?
That works.
Okay, may I have that motion?
I would like to make a motion to deny the conditional use for 625 South Jefferson.
635.
635 South Jefferson.
Okay. And there's a second by Harry. Any public comment concerning this item? Seeing none, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? None opposed, motion passes, 7-0.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
At this time, I'd like to ask, John, will you go ahead and, on the ordinance that is currently in place, would you be able to include any schools within 500 feet from an STR? This is just for the future.
Yes, and as you may recall, you all had suggested that we take a look at that short-term rental ordinance, so we're in the process of reviewing that. We had mentioned a while, just a few weeks ago, that there are some changes to court cases and state laws that are prompting us to need some changes to the short-term rental ordinance anyway, so we can definitely include that to what we look at.
Time frame on that, please.
We can bring it as quickly as you want. I think the last time we talked about it, you all said, "Let's hold off for a couple of months."
Well, I don't want to wait for a couple of months, because people need to understand what the ordinance and what the process will or will not be, so they don't continue to pursue properties that, in fact, might be a problem. So in total, that ordinance can be reviewed, and you can bring it back in a couple of months, but this specific item needs to be fast-forwarded for approval as soon as possible, so people can move forward on their STRs.
And I believe we're close to ready to bring that. We could bring it, the whole thing, I think, probably at the September Planning Commission, if that's okay to bring it all.
That's okay, because September is the next meeting. I mean, we're, the last meeting is in August, so I'm assuming that that would be the first meeting in September.
That's right.
But sooner than later is the strategy here.
And just to clarify, it does have to go to the Planning Commission first, so it would be the Planning Commission, then it would probably come to you all in the 1st of October.
I understand the process, I just want it out there for discussion, so people know what to do in investing in STRs.
Okay, we'll do that.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is Consider a Request for Certificate of Appropriateness for Exterior Work on a Historic Building Located at 215 West Two-Wig. John, you're on again.
Thank you, John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. First, to kind of set the stage here, this type of request is normally heard by the Design and Historic Review Commission. In this case, two of our members of the commission are involved in the project, as the architect and the contractor, and so with one vacancy on the board or the commission, we don't have enough members to actually vote on this item, so the applicant has agreed to have this heard by the city council instead. And so basically, the request is for renovations to a building within the downtown area. It does have historic overlay zoning, and so it requires a certificate of appropriateness, which basically is determining whether or not the proposed remodeling is compatible and consistent with the historic character of the building and of the property. I'm just going to briefly go through some of the images that we have. I believe the applicant is here, and I think Dell was going to make some comments as well, so they can probably describe a little bit more in detail what they're doing, but this is just a drawing of what they're doing, and this is the existing house, and then an expansion to it. This is some renderings of what it'll look like.
It's a beautiful historic building.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, he sold it a year and a half ago, right.
And again, we can come back to any of these if you have questions. These are the two side views.
That's the back side, the top is the back side.
Right, so you can see the existing house here, and then the additions, you know, towards the back. And as part of the requirements for the Design and Historic Review that the commission normally does, the applicants have to provide details of materials, colors, all of that sort of thing, and so there's some, some of that information is provided here. They're proposing a wrought iron fence in the front, and this is just what it will look like. That's the brick, brick type that is being matched. The roofing, we have a sample of the roofing, but it really wouldn't scan. We actually have the physical sample, it's kind of a gray roof color, but it's, on the new part, it's more of a flat roof, and so it's not visible. Examples of the types of windows that will be used on the expansion. And then here are the colors. If you recall the color renderings, these are the actual colors that will be used. You can see the primary color is that terracotta, and then the, some of the doors and windows will have that mist gray trim, and then the front door and window screens, as well as the fence, will be that more of a black color. And then there's the information with, what the sign, proposed sign will look like, as well as the colors on the sign. Staff is recommending approval of this certificate of appropriateness. These are our standard conditions for cases like this. Number one, that the colors, dimensions, materials will be as have been displayed to you all in the application packet, and that they will receive all permits required from the permits division. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Do we have questions from council?
So we're turning it into...
Yes, go ahead.
We're going to turn it into a restaurant, or...
An event.
And I kind of skipped over, I'm sorry, the, it's an additional building for a commercial kitchen and event space, as well as the new fencing and sign and remodeling of the facility. So it's a restaurant and event space, kind of.
And just FYI, I have talked to Chris Bremmstill, who's the one who purchased this building, and asked if she would take ownership of that median in front of the restaurant, and she said she would. She's working on landscaping for that, lighting for there, and we, as a city, would install the water meters in the median to ensure that the vegetation could survive. So that will, although you don't see it here, because that part is not done, but that will create a tremendous new gateway into our downtown area. So, and I always want to thank Henry Schmidt, because he's a lover of historic properties and has done incredible job of always making sure that our historic downtown continues to be something we're very proud of. So thank you, Henry, for your work, as usual. Other questions? Larry?
Beautiful building, wonderful idea. The only concern I have is there's no ramps on the front, there's no ramps on the side for entrance into the building, none of the pictures show that. So I certainly believe, and there may be some conflict with the historical preservation side, because I'm not sure how you make that ramp fit in with the scheme of the building, but it seems logical, well, not only logical, but according to ADA, there is a requirement for ramps into such a structure.
Yeah, with a significant remodel like this, they would, they would have to comply with Texas accessibility standards and ADA. I know the applicants can probably answer that question better. These are renderings that don't necessarily show all the architectural details, which, of course, they will have to include with their building permit applications, but they can probably answer what their plans are in terms of accessible.
The second floor, is that part of the restaurant business, or is that serving some other purpose?
Well, again, for this purpose, we're only looking at the exterior improvements, and are they historically compatible? So, that's not a question we know at this point, although, again, the applicant may be able to answer that.
Thank you.
Other questions? Dell or David, I don't know if you can address those issues, but again, that's not the purpose of today. Today's the purpose of the...
I will.
Okay.
All right. So, they are going to put in an elevator for the second floor that will take the accessibility, and there are ramps that will be placed on the east side of the building, so that will address the ADA issue. As far as, again, as far as downtown San Angelo, by the way, downtown San Angelo, Del Velazquez, we obviously very much support what, the work that's going to be done here and the added business that it's going to create in the downtown area. As the mayor already alluded to, the landscaping that will take place in the public medium out in front of the building will also add value to what we're trying to accomplish as a downtown revitalization effort. I did learn that there is an agreement for the building catty corner, or across the street, actually, from this facility. There is a parking lot there, and they have an agreement with them to use that space for additional parking. They will have valet parking available for the people attending the events or coming to eat at that restaurant, and so all the valet parking, and that will also be obviously a big help for the ADA component. And I think that pretty much covers it all.
Questions for Dell? Yes, Tom?
What kind of food?
I'm sorry?
What kind of food?
Steakhouse. Steakhouse.
Finance wanted to know.
[laughing]. Well, I know it's going to be called a copper bull.
Did they take all the books that Louis Hall had in there? Are they staying? He had, I bet, two legal libraries in there.
I'm sure he took them with him.
I don't know how many boxes it took, but it was more than one day's worth of boxes.
That's a beautiful building. I know Louis. I just want to say, I'm excited that they're doing this, keeping this specific building. I think this is great.
Is that a motion?
I think it's Harry's district. Harry did some make that.
I'll make the motion that we approve this as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, perfectly. We have a motion and a second. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing any nays? No nays? Then this motion passes, 7-0. Thank you very much for being here. Thank you.
He gave me, he's giving, he gave me a couple.
Item C is the first reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z23-07 to rezone property from the heavy commercial zoning district to the neighborhood. My microphone seems to come in and out, so I'm not sure what's going on, but can everyone hear me? Okay, I'll start over. First reading and public hearing of an ordinance for Z23-07 to rezone property from the heavy commercial zoning district to the neighborhood commercial zoning district being 2.473 acres located at 1261 and 1349 Glenna Street. John, you're on.
Thank you. Again, John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. You can see this area on Glenna is, the subject property is in red there. You can see the soccer fields up there adjacent, and then there's kind of some heavy commercial uses to the south of this, and so as you'll see, this whole area is zoned heavy commercial, although across the street and part of the soccer fields is zoned neighborhood commercial. And so, based on the type of retail that they want to do on this property, they need the rezoning from the heavy commercial to the neighborhood commercial. We did send out 17 notices to the surrounding properties, received one in support and none in opposition. I won't read through all of this, but basically, it is consistent with the area. It's a good transition between the heavy commercial uses and the soccer fields. This kind of a small retail use would help serve both the neighborhood that's across the street, as well as the people coming to the soccer fields, and it is compatible with the area. Staff does recommend approval. At their July meeting, the Planning Commission also unanimously recommended approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Tom?
It looks, it's good there, it'll put better, it'll look better on the tax roll, so I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. And any public comment concerning this piece of real estate and the change in zoning? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes, 7-0. Item D, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance amending planned development, PDO5-03, to extend uses currently allowed in specific areas on the lot, civic, institutional, religious, educational, athletic, and neighborhood commercial, to be allowed throughout the entire property located at 5687 Melrose.
Thank you. This is the TLCA campus, one of the TLCA campuses is the one there on Melrose at the When this planned development was originally created, it was created with multiple zones, and so most of the school uses were allowed on Zone B, as well as A. There was this C use, which was limited to just like a daycare use. And so, based on some of their plans, they have a need to expand into a portion of that Lot C with some of their buildings, school classroom buildings, and so the limitation on the original PD wouldn't allow the school or athletic uses onto those properties. One of the reasons that was done is there are some homes that are right, kind of in this area, right across the street, and I think the original intent was to not allow the more intensive uses of the school right across the street from those properties. However, given the things that have happened on the property, there really haven't been any complaints or concerns that we've heard regarding this, and so we didn't really see that much of a problem allowing them to continue those uses into the full scope of their property. This is just a site plan. You can see, I think they actually already have some temporary classroom buildings that encroach into that Area C, and so part of this is accommodating some of that that's already happened into that area. The daycare use that's there is, the buildings are there and not going away, so in terms of what's immediately across from those, those homeowners across the street will be the daycare use, as well as some classroom buildings, so nothing real obnoxious. Having said that, the residential zoning that is in the homes across the street allows schools like this anyway, and so it's, it's not like this is allowing something that wouldn't otherwise be allowed. Schools are generally allowed in residential areas anyway. This is just aerial photo of the site. Again, you can see some of those classroom buildings that are kind of already encroaching in this area of expansion of the PD uses. We did send out our notices, 32 notices, zero in favor. One did come in opposed, and the comments that were provided on their comment sheet were the noise, evening noise, and parking on the street, and so just kind of a concern. Again, they're actually doing all of these uses throughout the site already, and it's kind of accommodating what's, what's already there, and so that's one of the reasons staff is supportive. Staff does recommend approval, as did the Planning Commission at their July meeting unanimously. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
We'll start with Larry. Do you have questions?
No, ma'am.
Does any of council have questions concerning this item? Then is there a motion for...
Motion.
A motion by Larry?
Second.
By Karen? A public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed, motion passes, 7-0.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Teresa, may I ask you one? I want to go back to Item B on the certificate of appropriateness, just zooming way out. Is this historic design review, Downtown Historic Design Review Commission, our only board or commission that is like council, where there has to be five for a quorum, and any vote must pass four to zero? Or do we have others?
We thought they were all like that.
Oh, okay, well, maybe they are. But, well, not here. It's four zero on the Planning Commission, so...
Yeah, we would have to look at all of them.
Okay, that's not necessary. It just struck me as odd that there had to be five.
That's an official you don't know.
That's an official. I'll get back to you.
Yeah, got her. That's one.
Because I looked it up in the code of ordinances, and it clearly says five is a quorum for Downtown Historic. I mean, it clearly says that, but I didn't look at any of the others. Anyway, you don't have to do that.
Now, I'm going to do it, because I'm curious.
Okay, okay, well, sorry.
But meanwhile, we'd like that to stay. Okay, so, moving on, no closed session on Item Eight, follow-up and administrative issues. Item B, consider approving various board nominations, which is Economic Development Corporation, Carlos Rodriguez, SMD four to first term ending February 2025. May I have a motion for that approval?
I make a motion.
Lucy made a motion.
Okay.
And a second by Tommy. Any opposition to this appointment? Seeing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 7-0. Announcements in consideration of future agenda items, are there any? Seeing none, we'll move on to adjournment. May I have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion, a second, and a vote. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes, 7-0.
What time you got?
At this point, we have concluded the meeting at 9:13 a.m.